We're ready to begin. Wish to call the order, the meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission for our August meeting of August 28th. We'll ask at this time that our Commissioner Chip Pinion will lead us in our prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, we just give you thanks this morning for giving us the strength to get out of bed and to come to this great place this morning to do business of the county. And we just thank you for giving us this opportunity. We ask you to be with us today as we attend to the business that is before us, that you give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we need to make the best decisions for our county, for the citizens of the county. Father, we just pray for our county. We pray for all our leaders, that you continue to guide them and direct them, and all that you ask of them to do is they continue to guide us in the days ahead. Father, we just thank you for each one here. We pray you bless each one of them. Father, we pray for our nation. We pray for our state. As previously mentioned, our county, our cities that encompass us, we just, a lot going on, Father, right now. We just ask you just to be with all our leaders, just help them, comfort them, be with them, be with their families, just help us in the days to come. We thank you, we love you, in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you for that prayer, Commissioner Pinion, and good to see each and every one of you here this morning. We'll now have our roll call and determination of quorum. Madam Secretary.
Jim Everwater. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Bogle.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Trey Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Quorum has been determined. We have no minutes for this meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Vice Chairman?
That is correct.
We now come to the public comment period. None were, we were not notified of any. I don't think we have anyone that's wishing to do one at this time. So, we will move on now to items withdrawn or deferred. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. No items have been taken off the agenda today.
Thank you, sir. We'll move into our new business. Item A, submitted for preliminary plan approval for our subdivision, Section 2, 231005. Seven lots on 6.4 acres, zoned RM, located along Compton Road. Chad Christensen is the applicant. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good morning, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well today. You'll recall Section 1 of BORA subdivision was recorded back in September of last year. The original plan did not contain lots on the east side of the new road, which is called Esalen Court. However, since this is a public right-of-way, the applicant now desires to divide additional lots on that east side, similar in size to what was done for Section 1. When we met with the applicant, we did alert him to the concerns that we had about this property developing in more of a piecemeal fashion, as had been the case. So, to that end, we did ask for a stub street to be added to Esalen Court for in the future development of the remaining Dunaway tract. This stub currently is less than 150 feet, so at this time, a cul-de-sac is not going to be required. We did make it clear that if that track, the larger track, ever developed in the future, we would expect to see this connection to be made. Our comments have been addressed. There are just a couple of minor things I do want to point out. The first has to do with the rear setbacks when you look at the lots 13 and 14 along that stub street right there. I've had discussions with the applicant's design engineer about this. The rear setbacks just need to be shown. He's got sides pretty much all around it. So, he, we had some discussions last week about this. He knows it has to be amended. But, yeah, basically where Mike is showing the arrow there on the map is where the rear setbacks will be. So, that's not an issue. They'll take care of that. I just wanted to point that out. The other one is because of the number of lots, this is probably going to have to have a mail kiosk. They have set aside an area near the detention lot toward the front of the property. Now, this won't approve that because of separate site plans. The middle will be required. We can handle that administratively. But, due to the number of lots with this new section, that's pushing it above the threshold that the U.S. Postal Service will require a mail kiosk. So, with that, the rest of our comments have been addressed, and we'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant and his design engineer are present.
Thank you, sir. And Commissioners, any comments? Questions?
Just for education, what requires that kiosk in these subdivisions?
The requirement generally, it's eight lots or more. Once you hit that eighth lot, now, that number kind of varies depending on who you're talking to at the U.S. Postal Service. But, I've heard seven, I've heard eight, but generally, what we've been going by, once you hit the eighth lot, that's when they don't want to see individual mailboxes, they'll want to see an actual kiosk.
Other questions? Comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Doug, is there an overall plan or some sort of master plan for the remaining acreage? I mean, I know it may not be developed as of now, but just so we can plan properly and you all can plan.
Right.
And help them develop.
There's not. That was actually one of the reasons we had them put that stub street in there. They, and truthfully, they didn't want to put that in there. But, for the reasons I talked about earlier, because there hasn't been a master plan for the rest of the tract, we wanted to preserve that access in the future should it be necessary. So, as of right now, no, there isn't, there isn't anything.
And there's nothing we can do to really require one because it can develop as they determine.
Right, right. We at least wanted to be able to have something in place that would preserve that interconnectivity. So, without, you know, from what the applicant tells us, that he has no desire, not him, but the property owner has no desire to develop the rest of that tract. Of course, our response was, well, maybe he doesn't, but if he ever sells the property, they might. So, you know, we didn't want to lock ourselves into not having that interconnectivity there.
I appreciate you all thinking about that interconnectivity. Is there anything else we can do or recommend on our end to help that you might see that may pose an issue in the future before we approve this?
I know there's some drainage issues going through there, at least on some of that property. Mike, you might want to address that a little bit.
No, not so much. It's, they're incorporating a new detention pond in this section. We had hoped that they would, could upsize this detention pond that they built for the first section, but a doctor, well, it's actually two doctors own these large tracks next to them, and they were not interested in selling the property. This lot 7 is a stormwater pond for the first section. We suggested that they went ahead and try to buy a little hunk of land and upsize it, you know, size it for this newer section, but they were unsuccessful. So, they're going to put another pond in on this side and have to, you know, put up the whole HOA, maintain this as well. So, but yes, we, you know, we knew it was going to develop. It's just a matter of time.
I know it's hard to require on the what-if.
Right.
It may never develop, but if it does, do, are we locked where we can expand the drainage or the detention area, or is it still in an area that could be expanded if needed?
Well, they, you know, essentially, they, I don't want to say it painted themselves in a corner, but they essentially painted themselves in a corner by making this pond small, knowing that the rest of the property was going to develop. So, they're going to have to go back and lose more land in other areas to manage the stormwater. But, yes. Thank you.
I will add to that. If you look on that aerial that Mike's got up, you can see in the lower right-hand corner, I guess that'd be the southeast corner, you can see there's a cell tower down in there. It's been there for several years. Of course, they'd have to plan around that, too. So, that's just another constraint on the property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doug and Mike, not that this development is going to impact greatly on the traffic on Compton Road, but what is the long-range plan for Compton?
I want to say it's, yeah, I think Mike's correct. I believe eventually what they're looking at is the possibility of a five-lane road in that area. Of course, that is a state road right through there. So, any development, any widening of that road would have to be done with, through in conjunction with T-DOT. But, I believe, yeah, Mike's going to pull up some of the...
Because that area seems to be popular.
Mm-hmm.
And eventually, more subdivisions are heading that way. Just wondering.
Yeah, it's a five-lane.
Five lanes. And is there, is there a date? Is it like a 10-year plan, five-year plan, 20-year?
They, they're calling, the city is calling it a short-term improvement number 24. So, it's, short-term is typically zero to 20 years. So, kind of a wide gap.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, if there are no further questions, I would make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Motion has been made to approve with staff comments. Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving now into item B, submitted for final plat approval. Number 1 is Council Resubdivision, Lot 4, 23, 2038. Three lots on 13.77 acres, zoned RL, located along Span Town Road. Terry LaQuire is the applicant, includes a request for a fire hydrant waiver. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to shift some property lines on these properties, a couple of properties involved here, to create two five-acre tracks while reducing the size of Lot 1 to roughly over an acre. The plan for Lot 1 is to replace the existing single-wide mobile home with a double-wide. We will monitor that situation, as single-wide mobile homes are only allowed on properties of less than five acres by special exception by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Lot 2 is going to have frontage. Lot 3 is going to access Span Town Road via a 50-foot access easement through Lot 2. This property is not within CUD's jurisdiction, it's actually within the Nolansville College Grove Utility District. Information provided by them indicates that a hydrant cannot be supported in this area, so they have asked for a fire hydrant waiver along with the approval of the plat. Most of our comments have been addressed. There's a couple of minor tweaks on the plan that they need to do, but for the most part, they're really, the main outstanding item is the waiver. The other couple items, as far as nearest, and I want to say they added this distance to the fire hydrant, and then state plane coordinates on two property corners. Those can be handled prior, will verify those are done prior to the plat being recorded. So, with that, you know, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments, Commissioners?
When they ask for a waiver, and we got a double-wide home there, does that mean we're going to have to put a sprinkler system in that double-wide home?
No, not for the number of lots we're talking about. And we changed our regulations several months back. We capped it at five, under five lots, don't have to do sprinkling, anything above that would have to.
Commissioners? Mr. P.
Please clarify. I know the easement is on the right. I guess the Lot 1, unusually shaped, to say the least, comes from the road with an arm around. Please verify the lots for me. Identify the lots.
Yeah, Lot 1 is going to be, yeah, Mike's pretty much got the extent. That line that they're putting right there, that's going to be Lot 1, if this is approved and recorded. Lot 2, can you zoom out just a little bit, Mike? Lot 2 is going to have that, you can see they're dissolving a portion of that, that existing property line. And then Lot 2 is going to have that little arm that goes down to the back of Lot 1. And then Lot 3 is going to have the right-of-way property of Lot 2, I'm sorry, property of Lot 2. Lot 3 is going to have, you can see where that line is now, I see it. Lot 3 will have the private easement going all the way back to it.
The arm on the left, is that Lot 1 or 2?
It's going to be Lot 2. Yeah, that, it's, right now, is actually part of the overall Lot 1, to keep it five acres, but what they're going to do is break that off, and then that little arm will be part of Lot 2. It is unusually shaped. You're right.
So, I believe both arms are Lot 2. This leg that goes down and touches Lot 1, and then I believe this leg that goes down is also...
Oh, you're right. And then, yes, that's Lot 2, and then Lot 3 is actually off the easement.
This is Lot 2. And then Lot 3 is landlocked, but it has this access easement from Lot 2.
Is that a 50-foot?
It is. Access? Yes, sir.
Yeah. 50-foot easement, but the segment where it abuts the right-of-way is 76 feet, right here. So, the track, the flagpole width is a little bit wider than the easement.
You see it kind of tails in there a little bit as it goes up? Yeah.
Since we have that dog leg right there in the middle going around the corner, will that limit the number of, or types of vehicles that can get back there?
Well, I think a lot of it will depend on where the driveway location is. I mean, obviously, they're not going to try not to put it over their sole site or anything. But, I don't think it's, I mean, for the one or two houses that'll be back there, I mean, I don't think it's going to be that major of an issue.
You think fire trucks and everything can get back in there without any problem going around that corner?
Have a firefighter in the room.
Depends on how good the driver is.
I haven't seen any turn templates on it, so it'd be hard to say without getting a CAD drawn on it.
Mr. Chair, on, Michael, on our iPad, we just have the one plan view, and in Lot 3, it shows in blue a top of bank for tributary to Lionel Creek. Is there any flooding issues anticipated here?
I did not see any FEMA issues. It's, property's pretty high up. You can see the topo of the property. This Lot 4 is going to be carved up, it's going to become part of Lot 2. Lot 2 will go down either side. Let me turn off the aerial. We've got the new 2023 aerial. It's very data-intensive, so it slows things down. Remember to turn it off when I'm panning around. But, this is a leg that goes down to Lot 1. This one goes down to the road. And then, this is the corner that Commissioner Whitworth was talking about, right here, and then it, well, it'll go back ups, uphill. Was it Lot 3? I think will be up in this area. So, it's, to answer your question, it's pretty high, high elevation.
At 800 feet, 800 to 700?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman, Lot 2 has a leg that surrounds on each side of the cost of property. That's what we determined? Okay. Is Lot 2 to use the same easement as Lot 3? And if so, do we need to denote that, and are there any maintenance agreements that need to be in place?
Well, Lot 2 is going to, I mean, that is, that's going to be their, there's not another way to get back to Span Town Road unless they were to go through Lot 1, but there's no easements on there denoting that. So, I don't think we need anything further.
Okay.
Because that is their access.
I didn't know if we had a preference. I did see the Lot 1 possibility. I just didn't know if we wanted it all in one area, or if it made a difference.
They're not showing a cross-access easement to Lot 1.
Okay.
You know, just looking at this, I know a few weeks back, we had discussion about the flag lots and concerns we had, and I'm looking at this really as an emergency response. If I've got to go back in there with a truck, we talked about a weight of the truck, and how the truck's going to get in, how the truck's going to turn around. I think we're digging ourselves right back to what we talked about just a few weeks back. It looks like to me this is going to be hard for the emergency folks to respond. It looks like it'd be hard to, unless we got a concrete turnaround or something for them, turn around in, we may have a wrecker service out there trying to get one of the trucks out of the mess.
Commissioners? Other comments, questions, or a motion? Doug's staff recommend approval with comments?
I think we would on this one. The only reason it's coming before you in the first place is because of the fire hydrant waiver. If this could have supported a hydrant, you wouldn't even be seeing this. So, what they're proposing meets the regulations.
So, if it didn't come to it, staff would probably approve it?
Yes.
I move to approve with all staff comments. Motion approved. Have a second. Further discussion? Not, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no. Make record of that. Go to item 2. Terry Lee Stacy subdivision, 23, 2039. Three lots on 13.53 acres, zoned RM, located along Rock Springs Midland Road. Terry Lee Stacy is the applicant, includes a waiver for the creation of a lot measuring less than five acres located off a private easement with fire hydrant distance. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to split two lots from the parent tract, leaving approximately nine acres remaining. Lot 2 will have frontage along Rock Springs Midland Road. Mike's got the plat up, and you can see it also on your iPads. Lot 1, however, is further in the back, and is going to be accessed via a 50-foot access easement. The easement, or, excuse me, the lot, however, only measures about two acres in size, which is less than the five-acre minimum that we have along private easements. They are asking for a waiver to that provision along with a waiver, because Lot 1 will be so far off the road, even if you put a hydrant in front, it wouldn't be able to be within 1,000 feet. The plat in and of itself, except for the waivers, they've addressed our comments. The plat appears to be in good order. The applicants are present. If you do have questions for them specifically about the purpose of the lot, but with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners?
Mike, in that, is there any flooding issues through there? I know it gets low down through there. I couldn't remember on that end if it was as bad back toward 231 or not.
Now, I think they do have local drainage issues, some streams. You can see the, this is a stream here that kind of cuts through it, but they denote that with a buffer on there. But, they don't have any FEMA issues on this property.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to actually hear from the owner and what they're actually trying to do or wanting to do. Are these lots for sale? Are these family members or what? I'd kind of like to just get an explanation. We'd ask that you come forward. I'd like to have your name and address here in front of the podium.
36 Rock Springs Midland Road, Christiana. We've got triplets, and we're giving part of the land to them to build them a house on. And that's it.
Questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you. Commissioners? Mr. Chairman, I move to approve with all staff comments. Motion to approve. Have a second. Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved. Moving now to item 3, Peggy's Cove, 23, 2049. One lot on 1.85 acres, zoned RM, located along Ruby Drive. Terry Jones is the applicant, includes a waiver for a lot of less than five acres along a private easement. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The applicant is proposing to divide about two acres off of Ruby Drive for a new residential lot. The lot will not have direct frontage onto Ruby Drive, but you can see it pretty much, it doesn't quite tee into it right there, but you can see, I mean, it's right on it, even though there's no frontage along the road itself. The lot, however, similar to the last application we just looked at, is less than five acres, which would be accessed off of that private easement. Now, in time, if the rest of that track were to develop, I would anticipate Ruby Drive being extended to the east, where basically the waiver would be kind of an on-issue at that point, because that would be right-of-way, but just the one lot. We didn't really feel it necessary for them to extend the road at this point. Most of the issues that we had on this have been addressed. Really, the waiver is the only outstanding comment. So, we'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present and can explain the reason for the request, if you'd like him to come up.
Commissioners? I'd like for the applicant to come forward. Applicant? Name and address.
I'm Terry Jones, 3680 Ruby Drive. Horse Murfreesboro.
Lane.
Okay.
Situation here.
Okay. Yeah, I got a potential buyer. They'd like to build a residential home, and the Ruby Drive, of course, dead ends where my driveway starts. And then, of course, the easement would be, of course, so that he can turn his driveway in off of mine shortly after you dead-end Ruby Drive.
Any questions for the applicant? Lot? Thank you, sir. Commissioners? Questions, comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I hear no comments, so I'll move to approve. With staff comments.
Motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second? Have a second here. Commissioner Gooch, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it has been approved. Item 4, Burlwood, Section 6, 23, 2053. 53 lots on 14.24 acres, zoned RM, with a previously approved PRD located Oak Drive. 360 Development LLC is the applicant. Mr. Damasi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved by the Planning Commission back in May of last year. This final plat is consistent with that preliminary plan approval. Most of our comments have been addressed. There's a handful of what I would call housekeeping comments that need to be addressed prior before the, before the plat is recorded, mainly dealing with putting some measurements on drainage easements, making sure floor and pad elevations are explained properly, things like that. Nothing that would rise to a level needing a deferral or anything. These are things that we can verify prior to signing the plat for recording. But, the major issues as far as anything are concerned, we're taking care of, just a few housekeeping items left. But, with that, we recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, Doug, is this the last section of this?
No, there's still a couple more out there. There's one, there's one on the, it's more on the, I guess it'd be the northern side of the subdivision, if I remember right. There's still a couple of sections out that way.
Other than that, everything in good order?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval, subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve. Have a second. Commissioner P. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it has been approved.
Mr. Chair, but before we move on, could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Michael?
Michael, you know, there were some improvements last year on Rucker Lane that ties into veterans and then splits there. Do you know if, what the city's future is for the Rucker expansion heading the other way towards Mirrorwood and to 96?
I believe it's three lanes, but I can double check.
It's a three lane road from veterans all the way up to 96 eventually. As far as the timing, I don't really know what it is, but it's scheduled to be a three lane road.
Okay. I mean, that's kind of been off and on, off and on for a while.
Yeah. At one time, they were going to do the entire improvement, but for reasons I really don't know, they decided to do the southern portion first.
So nothing in the near future for?
Nothing I'm aware of. Now, we would have to talk to the, you know, contact our colleagues at the city to find out if it's been moved up at all.
All right, thank you.
I'll add a little bit to that since I backed right up to Rucker Lane. I've got an email here from Chris Griffin with the city of Murfreesboro. And one of the neighbors had sent him a question, asking, just wondering where we are on the Rucker Lane expansion. He said, thanks for the email and questions. Yes, we believe we have a workable solution with the pipeline company. That's been the holdup right there where the border station's at with pipeline. I have a meeting with our administrator on Monday to go over the bid opening and our options moving forward. I'll let you know how that goes. So it's on track. A lot of discussion still going on with completing it and we're talking about finishing that in two different phases. Last conversation says they may just take it all the way to Toots there at the intersection. Hopefully this year they'll get started on, yeah.
Yeah, there's the Colonial Gas Pipeline that crosses right here is what Jim was talking about.
Okay. Moving down to item five, Johnson Subdivision, 23 2054, four lots on 8.57 acres, zoned RM, located along Henley Road. Sarah and Royce Johnson are the applicants, includes a waiver for the creation of lots. Get in vote? Okay, motion did carry. I'm sorry. That's what she's here for, to keep me straight. All right, the motion did carry. All right, moving now into Johnson Subdivision. We'll try it all over again. 23 2054, four lots on 8.57 acres, zoned RM, located along Henley Road. Sarah and Royce Johnson applicants, includes a waiver for the creation of lots measuring less than five acres located off a private easement. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant is proposing to split this property into four lots, two of which are in the back, lots three and four. Mike's highlighting those on the map right now, will be accessed from a 50-foot private easement. Both of these are less than five acres in size. Lot four, if you look at it, you can see the 50-foot access easement going all the way to lot three, but you don't see the 50-foot connecting to lot four. You do see a connection there, L-12, which is about 25 feet, but not the full 50 feet that typically is required. So they're asking for a waiver to that as well. Most of the comments we have have been addressed, again, except for the waivers. There are, again, like with a lot of plats, there's a couple of what I would call housekeeping items. We'll make sure are taken care of before the plat is actually recorded, but the main outstanding item really is for the waiver requests. With that, I will say that the applicant is present and he can explain a little better what they are trying to do on that property. So with that, be happy to answer any questions.
Doug, can you explain that waiver for the connection between those two lots?
Yes, sir. Mike, can you put that plat back up? Thank you. The regulations we have, all lots have to have a 50-foot connection to that easement, but you see right there where Mike's highlighting, there's a little line there, L-12. L-12 only measures 25 feet, doesn't measure 50. So he does have a connection to the easement, it's just not a 50-foot connection. So that's one of the things that he's asking for the waiver from. Did that help?
Questions? Who has the applicant here if you need to?
Well, if I was going to make a motion to approve if there's no, if everything's been satisfied with the staff comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with staff comments.
I'll second.
Have a second.
One quick question, Doug. That 25-foot versus 50-foot, it's not an issue with just that one lot?
Correct.
It may be if there's other lots involved.
Right, if there were other lots involved, but yeah, it's, the lot three has the full 50-foot, it's lot four that doesn't, so it's just that one lot.
And that's the only connector that?
Correct.
That requires that waiver, but since it's that one lot, it wouldn't, should not be an issue at all now or in the future?
Yeah, I mean, lot two has road frontage as does the remaining lot one, so again, lots three and four, lot four is the only one that has that issue with the connection.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? It has been approved. Moving down now into item Cs, submitted for site plan approvals. Item one, CUD Midland Road Water Pumping Station, 23 3027. Construction of a water pumping station with detached generator enclosed on 2.24 acres, zoned RL, located on Midland Road, Consolidated Utility District of Rutherford County is the applicant. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. CUD has submitted a site plan for this pump station along Midland Road at the intersection of Oak Grove Road. Water station, or pumping stations like this are classified as essential services in our zoning ordinance and do not require special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is a little different than other essential services in the zone, but we actually did put a provision in there because of pump stations and the nature of what they're doing. We told, basically built into the ordinance a provision that they didn't have to go for Board of Zoning Appeal approval. Pretty much all of our comments have been addressed. There's only one item that needs to be updated on the engineer's plans, just listing the outfall acreages somewhere on the intermediate and final erosion control sheets. That, again, it's a relatively easy thing to do. So with that, we do have representatives from CUD here and will be happy to answer any questions. The site plan appears to be in good order.
Commissioners?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Motion to approve. Have the second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? It is approved. This is much needed in that area out there in the size of a water line that's needed. I think, what, 16? What's going to be put out there in that area? So this is what's needed in that area. Appreciate it. All right, moving now and to item eight, staff reports and other business. Mr. Demossi?
Yes, sir, thank you. Before we get into the items on your agenda, they, we passed out a letter to you from CUD regarding some changes they're making in relation to design standards and review for step collection, recirculating sand filter treatment, and drip irrigation disposal fields. Jason Laxon with CUD is here. We just wanted him to come up here for just a couple of minutes, kind of go over what's going on and see if you had any questions with that. So with that, I'll go ahead and ask Jason to come up if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine. Welcome, sir.
Morning Commissioners, I'm Jason, I'm with CUD. Believe Doug and Mike passed out a letter that we sent out last week to developers and engineers and the, I'll turn your attention to the last page of that. This is all been approved by our board at our last meeting. The number one thing that I think will affect the commission and Doug and Mike's office specifically is the very first item where we're reducing our minimum lot requirement to 40 lots. The reason for that is we receive a lot of inquiries about the minimum lots and people that are just a little under that kind of thing. So this is something that has been requested by developers and engineers for a while. I mean, of course, they probably would want to go further, but we feel like this is a good step to open up probably a lot of parcels in the county. It's got some items that it's more with the treatment stuff that's really CUD specific. We're trying to get a better, some better products for lifespan. Our sand filters, as they're currently constructed, we're, we've got about 23 years in on this now and we're realizing we've got about a 20-year product, so we're starting to see a lot of maintenance on those older products and trying to eliminate some of that and hopefully get out to the 40, 50-year lifespan. And then the, really the final thing that's shown is number six, the soils, something that whether or not you're aware, just in the last few weeks, TDEC has decided they will no longer review soils on these systems. They're not going to do quality checks and the one thing about these, these systems, they go as far as the soils go. That is the number one limiting factor. If, if the soils turn out to not work like they should have, then we've got a development without good sewer service. So that, that in our mind was detrimental and so with the state no longer doing the quality checks, we're going to take that on in-house. We're actually looking, we, we've already been approved to hire a soil scientist, so we are in the process of getting our job description and hopefully getting that advertised soon and getting somebody on staff to fill that role. And that strictly is just a measure to make sure in these submittals, we are getting the soils that we are supposed to be getting. As I said, that's the number one limiting factor. We can always replace filters, we can replace a lot of things, but the soil is not something that's readily available and if we need to go nearby, it's almost nonexistent. With that, I'm willing to answer any questions.
Thank you. Jason, I appreciate the information and what you're doing is a positive step in the future development of Rutherford County. It's positive. Quick explanation, the step systems that we're talking about, you mentioned 20 years. When they reach that particular age, what do we do? What do you do?
And that, and that 20 years is the infrastructure, it's the actual sand filter that's in place. That, that's the portion that we've seen as a weakness at this point. And so we have an ongoing project right now at 12 Corners. That one is one we're seeing some issues out there and we actually have an active, or an open bid right now. We opened bids later this week that we're going to construct and it's not going to be a sand filter per se, it's going to be a pre-manufactured system, which is one of the ones that we've got on our approved list. And so we will be replacing it while keeping the existing in service. But, and that's kind of the fine line is being able to replace while keeping everything up and going.
We've been thrilled with the performance of those systems for 20 years, but we were wondering what would happen when we got to this particular point in time. So going forward, you're making some changes as it relates to the life of those. Could you explain that a little bit?
The sand filter itself, the key component is the basin itself, I guess you could say, is basically a wood frame construction with a PVC liner. And the PVC liner, even though it's buried and not subject to UV light, we found out does not have the lifespan we expected. And so because of that, we've, we're changing our design to require a concrete basin. And that one is going to go well beyond any of our careers and where if we need to replace the media, it's a matter of vacuuming out the old media, put new media in and fix the pipe and then carry on.
These are all lessons that we've learned moving forward?
Lessons learned and then another thing we've not required that, I don't remember if it's spelled out, is we are requiring redundancy so that we have a minimum of two treatment trains at any given location. That way, if one needs to be taken down, we can run the other one at a higher rate for a short period of time while we, while we're making repairs or replacements.
CUD is maintaining those, repairing those, and replacing those as needed. There's a cost associated to that. Who pays for that?
CUD and rate payers. This is not tax dollars.
So it's not an HOA issue?
It's not HOA. When these developments are completed, CUD takes ownership of these systems. And that, and that's part of the reason is that way we are responsible. And, and I believe it's a reason that back when this started, the county really wanted it under CUD's umbrella was, was for that responsibility and that we didn't have to worry about private entity that just kind of put a Band-Aid on something and kept operating something that shouldn't be operating.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Jason, a couple of questions. So you're moving to a concrete vault. Give me an idea approximately the size of what these things would be?
I would say our average for say 140 or so homes, the, is about 55 foot by 157 foot. And that's, that's just the treatment portion, the, the sand filter, which we, we are now offering some alternatives that, that have a lot smaller footprint, somewhere in the third to maybe half range.
Okay. So these would be poured in place in the field?
Yes.
Okay. And, and does the, who fills the, who buys the sand or the media and places the media? Does CUD do that or is the developer?
The developer's contractor would do that.
Okay, all right. And who, I guess who makes sure that they're buying the right sand media with the grade, proper gradation and all that kind of stuff?
We heavily inspect every aspect and they look at that comes in, look at both, make sure it's the right size and everything, and also the cleanliness.
Okay. So if, if each site then requires two redundant systems, you could have two 55 by 170-foot structures on the site?
It would be half, each one would be half so that together they would treat the whole.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So somewhere around 55 by 75 would be, two of them would be the replacement.
Couple of questions, not related to this, but being you're here, just from my knowledge will be helpful. We had a gentleman up here last time, we had a meeting over on Ocala. Now, back when I was running a service company, been out of it about six years, there was no location on CUD that we had pressure issues. We were required to install pressure regulators at every home. You guys have any sites right now where you are saying we don't need pressure regulators?
Where you don't need them?
Right.
That is usually based on elevation and the pressure zone you're in. If we make a change in the area that raises the pressure, we would normally work with the homeowners to install those, or it may be, if it's part of a project, we may install them. It's a case-by-case basis, it's very site-specific. Sometimes we lower the pressure if it was extremely high and in that case, we try to check and see if those are in there, if they need to be taken out, and we work with homeowners on that as well.
Okay, so do you have any areas you are experiencing low pressures in Rutherford County at this time?
Not in our normal water service. Now, it, defining low pressure, it's changes from person to person. What we were required by state is to maintain 20 PSI at the meter and what we do is we evaluate that based on fire flow or during a fire flow event, which pulls the pressure down. We normally, at this time, want to have at least 40 PSI before we can make a connection.
And I appreciate all that. One of the things that gets us at a little bit of a disadvantage when someone comes in, homeowner comes in and says, hey, we already have 200 homes and we're experiencing low pressure and now you're wanting to add another business. I can tell you that I never did find a home where 60 PSI or greater wasn't made on CUD's site. So I just wondered if developments causing you some issues that we're not aware of that would be helpful for us to be aware of when somebody's bringing a plat in here to say, hey, we want to get this proved. I do know fire hydrants is totally different aspect, but I'm glad you brought that up because that was my other question. When I first come on this committee, there was some discussion about fire protection. CUD rep was here and he was talking about next 20, 25 years, there would not be any fire hydrants that didn't meet the requirements inside the county. Are you guys still on track to meet that obligation next 20, 25 years?
We are. We have, it, it's just a very small portion of hydrants that do not meet the minimum 500 flow requirement. And as far as with new, either commercial or residential, anything over five lots, we evaluate it hydraulically based on our whole system. We evaluate for domestic flow, any irrigation that may be put in, and also fire flow. And we issue what's known as a will serve letter. That letter a lot of times is submitted to Doug and their submittals as well, but all commercial, whether it's converting a home to a business or something like that, all commercial requires that will serve letter and then development, anything over five homes. five homes requires it. So that, that is something that we, we input all that into our model. We, we calculate anything and our model itself is verified pretty regularly as far as actual flow data in the field to make sure that it, it is working correctly.
Sounds fantastic. Got a great company. Always enjoy working with CUD. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
What's the reason the minimum number of residential lots went from 60 to 40?
The biggest reason is the number of inquiries. For a while, I've kind of been a proponent of reducing it. What that number, that number was a number we, we kind of came up with was a good, a good step anyway. And so with that, we proposed it to the board and they were in agreement that now is probably the time. We kept the, the minimum a little higher for a while, but we are pretty much surrounding the county now. In one of these smaller systems, it, almost anywhere in the county it goes, we're not going to be far from another system. So it's not like we're driving 30 minutes to go to one system that only services 40 lots. So it, it's kind of a timing thing that we, because we have so many of these systems, we're approaching 80 now, that we are almost always near anything else that will come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate the input there. Next on the list, a couple of things that we wanted to bring to your attention. The first thing I'll talk about is the continuation of our discussion we've been having over private easements. You'll see on your iPads that we do have a, well, it's a working draft, I'll call it. It's not a full draft. I do want to make sure everybody is aware, this is not, we're not finished with this yet. This is not a final draft, but we wanted to at least put it in front of you, kind of get some feedback from you, kind of see if we're going in the right direction or not. There's still several things we need to iron out on this. As part of our research, we came across, actually the city of Clarksville, Montgomery County, has something, and you can see in the regulations, it's called a residential common access easement. And it's for private roads, if you will, from three to 10 lots and in unincorporated areas. So what we looked at was those regulations and kind of tailored them a little bit to what we'd be seeing here in Rutherford County. There were some things on there. We met a staff to discuss this and there were some things we didn't felt really applied to us. There were some things that we changed. The, a couple of things that we wanted to, I'll give a quick overview first of all. If you look at number one, and this is something that I think we need to have more discussion about, that last sentence on number one. Of course, it says the residential easement shall have direct access and connect to a public street, which, you know, that, that's fine. But then it says it may, they have to maintain the same level of improvements as the street it connects to. So if the street it connects to has curb and gutter, sidewalks, whatever, then we would expect the private easement to have that as well. We had some discussion amongst staff about that. We thought we'd leave it in there for now. That's not something we currently do, but we thought we'd leave it in there just for discussion more than anything. This was something, number two, of course, we would keep in our minimum lot size of five acres on private easements. The city of Clarksville and Montgomery County in the unincorporated area, they actually allow for an acre and a half, but we thought it'd be better to keep it at five acres. The next, well, that's, sorry, the numbering didn't do quite right. The second, number two, residential common access easement shall not exceed 1,600 feet in length. We don't have a maximum length right now for easements. The 1,600 feet is actually the same as what's in our subdivision regulations for cul-de-sac length. So we thought we might incorporate that into here. Again, this is all for discussion. Number three goes over all the, the minimum specifications for that easement road. Again, there are some discussions about this, but again, this can be modified. Building setbacks, really, the, the way that the regulations that we modeled this off of had kind of a, for lack of a better word, wonky way to determine setbacks. We thought it would be better to just say, front setback is measured along the property line where the easement's located. All your other setbacks would be as you would normally enforce them. All lots are to obtain access directly from that easement. Adequate fire protection, including hydrants, shall be installed in accordance with the subdivision regulations and other applicable Rutherford County codes and regulations. We've also been having conversations with Jason and the folks at CUD about the possibility of extending a water line up a private easement. That's something we still need to iron out. I don't think we're at a solution to that yet. There's a lot of factors that go in there. Access to the easement is always a big issue. Are we going to allow them to, you know, do private gates on those easements? If that's the case, it might be harder for them to actually access those. So that might be an issue. The easement itself can operate as a public utility and drainage easement, but there may be easements necessary outside of that. So we put that note in there. Easement shall be shown on the final plat with a cross section so we can verify it's consistent with those design parameters back in number three. If necessary, we can issue a address for a private road. We can actually give it a road name, provided it is allowable through emergency communications where we check our road names through 911 and it can be addressed off that if necessary. And then the rest of it is just dealing with notes on final plats regarding, you know, the county's not responsible for any inspection maintenance. We're not going to be responsible for any of the stormwater inspection, any of the stormwater structures outside of easements and different things like that. These are just notes that we would propose putting on the plat should we see one of these. So that's kind of the direction we're going with this. We wanted to make sure before we spend any more time, we wanted to see what kind of feedback we might be able to get from the commission on this. If they like the direction we're going, if there was additional comments, concerns, things that maybe we didn't look at that you'd like us to. Again, we're not ready for any kind of a vote on this. This would, excuse me, be a change to our subdivision regulations. This would have to be advertised for a public hearing. So with that, I'll just, if, you know, be available for any questions.
You're looking for comments, Mr. Chairman. If, if you're looking for comments, Doug, the curb gutter and/or sidewalk improvements connecting to common type of streets, makes a lot of sense, actually, if you think about it as far as future long-term development, it, it makes sense. Aesthetically, it would be in the long-term best interest of the county to do that. So it makes some sense. It requires some thought, but initially it makes a lot of sense. Getting back to number, like number five, as it relates to, all lots shall obtain access directly from the residential common area, SS, access easement. That would eliminate four driveways side by side, correct?
Yes.
So some of the things that we've talked about and Commissioner Thompson was mentioning a little bit earlier, this would eliminate some of the things that we've seen in the past that we didn't like.
Yeah, I believe it would. I, I do think there's, there's probably some things we still need to add in here regarding multiple easements and things like that, especially on a larger tract of land. If you had one, then a little further over, you get another one. You know, I think there's some, there, there's still some to be said about that, about looking at something to put in there. But I think to answer your question, or your comment, I should say, yes, number five, I do believe it, it solves that issue.
Let me just say that this would eliminate any question in my mind about approving something similar to that. What you're getting at appears to be a road more than driveways connecting side by side by side by side. And I think that's the direction, at least this planning commissioner would, would like to go into the future. So that's a good job and you're not going to have to twist my arm to get me to support something like that.
Doug, could you briefly explain how this would have impacted the three that came before us today? I'm just thinking back through those. The, the council one I know may still have two driveways because they're on extreme ends of the property. But the other ones today, would it have significantly impacted?
I don't think so. Because most of those only had, well, at least a couple of them. There was, let me see here. Yeah, like you said, the council one was kind of different. The one for Terry Lee Stacy, that was three lots, but only one of them was actually accessed off of that. Now, Clarksville actually had something, you know, in addition to this, what they call the residential common access easement. Let's see if I can't find that real quick. They had a, they had something different for just, yeah, they called it a shared driveway easement, which was a type of permanent private easement by which a right is granted to the owners of two or three residential properties to allow ingress, egress, joint access, et cetera, on a common private driveway, but didn't rise to the level of this. What I would anticipate doing is probably adopting something similar to that for one or two lot subdivisions that had private easements, because this is only dealing with three to 10. So really the ones that we looked at today, I don't think necessarily would have fallen into this. They probably would have fallen into this, the smaller, the one for just one and two lot subdivision, which we wouldn't require a lot of these particular improvements for that.
Which does make sense in the case of the family distribution that to not have to build a road for those particular lots. But some of the lots you're talking about, the initial lot that touches the road frontage would likely be, have its own driveway than the others. So we're looking at probably two in most cases.
Yeah, I mean, we could always build something similar into those regulations for like what number five says on this. You know, okay, yes, you've got, you're not required to put all these improvements in, but you still have to have access off of whatever this drive is. That's, that might eliminate that issue where you would have multiple driveways.
And would we have to, going back to the council layout, would that require a waiver or something or in that situation? Because there are a lot on one side of the property and two lots accessed on the other, would we get into some additional paperwork or waivers to, to make sure?
Perhaps. I think the biggest thing is going to be the, the fire hydrant. That's always going to be the one, especially when you start getting too far off the road. I mean, obviously they're not going to put in or allow, CUD want a lot to put in a water line that's going to serve one or two lots way in the back because of water quality issues they may run into, so.
Depending on the number of lots serviced by that easement, is the 50 foot enough to service those utilities? I know you're talking about water and some other things.
It should be. I mean, that would be the size of a typical right of way. And we did put the ability in there if there needed to be easements outside of the right of way that they could do that, or the easement that they could do that.
Okay. I like this a lot. This is going to clear up a lot of issues.
Like I said, and I appreciate, yeah, it's, it's still a work in progress, obviously. We had a meeting, we still need to get, you know, Josh's input into this as far as the specifications and things. We wouldn't want to move forward without him. He can get his, the, a look over of this. So we'll, we'll definitely be heading down that road.
Okay. Well, thank you for your work on this because I know this has been a point of contention for a long time for trying to approve these and something planning for the future. So thank you.
Yeah, I was looking at this too, Doug. I think it's on point, the, in my mind, reason I voted no earlier on that one. And when I'm thinking about a thousand foot, we just did on Midland Road, out there, Midland Road, lots a thousand foot back. I do think about that big fire truck I saw yesterday sitting out at Rock Vale. When I see the bases required, it will be a lot better feel if, if they're putting that kind of base down and not miring up on a spring day or on a fall day, trying to pull them out. The other thing that I was thinking about when I voted no was Tiger Hill, especially Span Town Road. I don't, there's nothing on my map today that tells me what kind of hill we're trying to climb or get to back on this lot. That would help me understand what type of terrain that firemen is going to have to fight to get back there. So anyhow, that's the reason I said no. That was a long haul back without enough detail for me. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if there's no other questions, we'll continue to fine tune this and then get you some, eventually get you a final draft of this for consideration before scheduling it for a public hearing, if that's, that's acceptable. All right.
All right. Thank you, sir. I believe you have one other item on there?
Yes, sir. One other item. And I sent everyone an email early last week regarding a change to our bylaws. And this is for the public comment period based on the state law passed, I'm sorry, the state legislature passing a state law about all public meetings, having a public comment period in their agendas. You'll see that I've been working with Mr. Christensen, our attorney, to craft some regulations. He was nice enough to pass along a couple of models that we kind of, that we used and modified to fit our purposes. This would deal with the, the public comment period and we would add this language to our bylaws. You'll see that number one, all regular meetings will have a dedicated time provided on the agenda, which is separate and distinct from public hearings. Planning commission will only receive public comments that are related and germane to the items on the agenda for that meeting. If, now this becomes more of an issue for the public hearings when we have rezonings than it does for today's meeting. But if there is an individual that wants to speak on an item on the agenda that already requires a public hearing, which would be our rezonings or ordinance amendments, the individual shall provide those comments at the required public hearing for that item and not during this public comment period. This is really just so we're not having to hear everybody say the same thing two times during public hearings. That, that's really the, the purpose of that. You'll see under number three, we would designate a total of no more than 30 minutes to be devoted to speakers. Each speaker is limited to three minutes with the chair of the planning commission or their designee keeping time. If there happen to be more than 10 speakers, the 30 minutes shall just be divided by that number of speakers. So if you had 30 people, they'd each get a minute as opposed to three minutes. Of course, the planning commission could extend that by a majority vote. Speakers can request to speak during that public comment period by coming to the planning commission's office and signing up on the business day prior to the said meeting, which would be 4:30 on, typically on Fridays, prior to our Monday meetings. And goes into the signup forms and all that stuff. And then we'd make an amendment to the order of business where we would put the public comment period where we're currently doing it after the consideration of the minutes of the previous meeting. So that's what we're proposing. These do not require a public hearing since we did provide the notice with at least five days, you can make a motion here to approve this and we can go ahead and add this in. But at this point, we'll be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Real quickly, Nick, if we adopt this in two years down the road, we want to reduce it, let's say to 20 minutes versus 30 minutes and two minutes versus three minutes, we can do that just by simple motion and vote?
Yes.
Other questions? Comments? We have a motion.
I move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and second for the comments.
Yes. Is, they have to sign in for, at 4:30?
By 4:30, the business day prior to the meeting. So we would have a signup sheet in our office for, you know, the next meeting, which is the 11th of September. And if somebody wanted to speak, not at the public hearing, but at the public comment period, they'd come and sign up for that. They don't have to sign up for the public hearings.
Can they do that by phone or do they have to be there in person?
I think they could do it. It just says, hold on, let me read it real quick.
That's the way we, we do it now here for commission meetings. They can call in to the secretary here.
I don't think there'd be, it doesn't say you can or can't. I don't think there'd be, if somebody called and said, I can't make it down there, but can you sign me up? We would, we would do that.
Make sure I'm clear on, on what the procedure's called for. You've got 30 minutes max. We've got 10 things on the agenda. Would that limit them that we could only have 10 people to come and speak?
Well, no, what it's saying is, you, like you said, you have a, a maximum of 30 minutes during that public comment period. If you had 10 people sign up, that'd be three minutes a person. Everybody's allowed a max of up to three minutes. Let's say you get 30 people to sign up. That doesn't mean all 30 people get three minutes and you're here for an hour and a half. We would take the number of people and divide that into 30. So if you had 30 people, each person would just get a minute instead of three minutes.
I was thinking about that storage business last week and there's a lot of folks here that wanted to air out. Let's say we had four projects like that, would we be saying we're not going to have but a 30-minute public hearing?
Now, keep in mind, the public hear, these are not for the public hearings for the rezoning cases. This is for that little public comment period that we get into right after we approve the minutes. This is separate from the public hearings.
I'm good.
Yeah, they don't have to sign up for the public hearings and we would still limit them to three minutes. But yeah, if they're lined up out the door, I mean, historically, we've allowed everybody to speak that wanted to speak. But the public comment period is separate and distinct from the public hearings.
What you have to understand is where this come from. This come from the state legislature. It come out of, it come out of Chattanooga and it come out of Maristown area. That's where it come from. Evidently, somebody was unhappy because they didn't get to say something in a commission meeting and that's where it come from. And that's how this all developed. We are something somewhat different when you're talking about what we do here at a commission, at a planning commission. In other words, I think we've had more comments on the comments we'll actually have on the comment period. And I think, I, I think that's where we are. So we now have a motion. We have a second. Madam Secretary called the role on that, so we'll, we'll have that official.
Jeff Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Kush?
Yes.
Lee Vogel?
Yes.
Lee Vogel?
Yes.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Trey Gooch?
Yes.
Chip Pinion?
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth?
He left.
He left.
Oh. And Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. And Marvin Whitworth. Jim Thompson, sorry. Skip over one. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Anything else?
I don't have anything further other than to say our next meeting, we're going to